Everybody's attention please. We're going to start this meeting off tonight. This is budget time and we're gonna try to get this wrapped up tonight. We appreciate everybody's patience throughout this process. Counsel, I thought before we get started, do we want to try to come up with a consensus on what's the basic or the minimal service that we want to at least get out of this? Or do you guys want to come right in with the cuts? I'm not sure what you guys came prepared to do right off the top.
I'll tell you, my goal is to fulfill the request of the police chief, fire chief, and the development department in adding positions, all of them public safety related. And I think I have an idea for a good start. And if you want me to go into that, I will.
Yeah, let's go ahead and let's just right in.
I've come up with a number of cuts and some rationale behind them. And if you hear me out before you start beating me with a stick, I'd appreciate it. The development department has requested a -- you too Bob. Has requested to replace a vehicle, used vehicle, $24,000 coming out of sales tax. I'd say postpone that and stay the course with our used vehicles. I know they're in need of one, but let's get through this year. Parks Department has requested two John Deere tractors. I'd say cut it to one, that would save $23,000. That's out of hotel motel tax. And I would propose that $23,000 be put into the community field fund and that we take $23,000 out of the sales tax from the community field fund so that the funding is coming from sales tax. The signage, the parking lot signage, we've already heard that they potentially have been able to reduce that from 50,000 to 25,000 dollars. The electronic ticketing, I think we can hold off on that. It's $10,000. I think it's more important to get the personnel in place. The fire department got a grant. All they're in need of is the AED training aid. So instead of 34,700, they need about 10,000. So that's another 24,700 in savings. The economic development fund is another sales tax. All of these have been sales taxes that I've mentioned except for the one hotel motel. Economic development fund, $20,000. That's the only permanent cut that I have at this time. The other is the parking lot, finishing the parking lot at Main and Valley. Again, that's $50,000 out of sales tax. We can get by and work that into a later budget. That's 296,700 dollars in savings. We have a one-time payment coming from Spear-Wangard Development of 1.2 million dollars. We'd need to take 33,300 out of that to get to the 330,000 dollars to fund two police officers, a firefighter, and a part-time nuisance officer for one year. And that's all it's gonna provide us. And I know that the staff and in particular the city manager does not like using one-time funds to get this done. But I think we need to give ourselves a cushion so that we can discuss the really hard decisions that we have to make on how we are going to come up with a permanent funding. And I also think that in the meantime, we can put the finance fee to a vote. And based on the six police officers, three firefighters, and one nuisance officer, we're looking at in the fourth year, a million and 30,000 dollars. If we put three and a half cents on as a request for the franchise fee, that's gonna give us a million dollars. We can find the 30,000 dollars in additional cuts. I've pored over the departmental budgets and I don't see recommendations there that wouldn't hurt the effectiveness of those departments. But I do have the priorities. And right now, that's the public safety. And if it's necessary to make cuts in those other departments, if we can't get the franchise fee passed, I can see that as being part of what we have to do along with a property tax increase. But for me, it's very important that we give the public an opportunity to decide that if the franchise fee is the right way to go. Or if we would have to make significant cuts in other departments. And I'm not gonna start naming off departments right now because people would be saying I'm putting a scare tactic into them. I don't want them to do that. I want them to think about the importance of the police and the fire and the nuisance department at this point and move forward. The other proposal that I had, and I'm sorry I left this out. The pump house at the golf course would have to be eliminated from the hotel motel tax funding. I would propose that it go into, that we bond for that, that that's repaid for with a increased fees and show that as a separate fee for the golfers per round of golf. And they've done that in the past. They added, I think it's for several years, there was a dollar fee to pay for a bond issue. And then I would take that, take the 120,000 dollars from the hotel motel, put it in a transit bus purchase, and then put the sales tax from the, that was gonna be used for the bus purchase into the offsetting for the officers in those three departments. That's what I've got at this point. It gives us time to really have honest discussions with ourselves and with the public and with the departments on what can, what fat if any there is that we can trim and whether a franchise fee would pass or not.
And then on your proposal, what if it doesn't pass?
If it doesn't pass, Bob, then we're sitting down and we're talking about, we've got them funded for this year. We have another budget cycle that we go through. And that's when we have to start talking about making very, very difficult cuts and very, very difficult property tax increases. But it funds them for this year. It gets us through this year only. That's it.
Right. If it passes?
No. With these cuts, it gets us through this year. There's 330,000 dollars in cuts that I would propose, all of it coming out of capital. And the only other thing that I would want to add is that it's also in the, this is coming out of capital projects fund, it would not go towards funding these positions. But there's been a request for six flatbeds for the riverfront and an enclosed trailer. I would propose that we cut that to two flatbeds and that they palletize the remainers and use those flatbeds to rotate. The businessman in me brings that out as well as the, instead of having it in a closed trailer, you can use job site boxes to achieve the same thing and do it for about half the If we find in the future that that doesn't work efficiently, then we may have to look at additional trailers. But I think at this point, two trailers would get the job done and we wouldn't see, we wouldn't see too much loss of efficiency there. I can repeat all those if you want me to.
Eventually. Could I ask you a question first?
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. I was just gonna make a statement. I just, I was hoping to see cuts carried over. And as I went through the budget, I didn't see a whole lot of that that we could make today and carry over into, appropriate to it into next year, into the year after. And I think these are good cuts. I just don't like the fact that we're delaying this another year. And I know we do need time for some bigger things, but yeah. Some of these I could do. Some of these I could, I hear you on, I just...
I see this as making, if we decide cuts in other departments without giving it the necessary time that we need, then it becomes an emotional decision for everybody, for us, and it becomes an emotional decision for the public.
I agree.
Because the library doesn't want us to cut them, Civic Music doesn't want us to cut them, the kids that use the swimming pool don't want us to cut them, the bees don't want us to cut their budget, and we can go on and on and on. I think, for me, again, it's about the priority of getting the chiefs' positions filled that they claim they need. And nobody knows it better than what they do. And the, getting that taken care of first, and then finding out a way to make it permanent. And then say a lot of prayers that we hope that the future is brighter and that one day we won't need to have as many police and firefighters because the world's gotten better.
Sounds good on paper.
I think he makes excellent points because what cuts that we'll carry over are, at this point in our budget discussion, will be quick and I think may even be rash.
What?
And it would be just a quick decision that we make without really, really thinking very hard about it. Making permanent cuts to departments is something that I think should take a while for us to think about, not, you know, two hours every week for a month. To me, that's not enough time. And I've had a lot of people, not a lot, I've had a few people say, you know, going in and cutting non-essential services. But for me, everything we do and everything we supply the citizens in this town can be essential. We want growth in Burlington, but nobody's gonna come here if there's no library and if there's no public swimming pool. You know, to me, non-essential services, that doesn't exist here. Everything we do is essential for keeping everyone here happy and healthy and getting more people to come here, which in turn would increase, you know, the tax base, right? That's where our funding comes from. But I think right now, making cuts to the capital projects is going to be something that hopefully we can maybe all agree on. Because it's not making permanent cuts to departments and it's just not something I would be comfortable with doing. And the other option would be to do nothing at this point, I feel like, since we can't seem to find a common ground with either just doing the franchise fee or just raising property taxes. You know, we can come back and talk about that forever, but we have to, we have to get this figured out tonight.
So what are you in favor of as far as getting the funds to do whatever?
Well, I actually, while we were going through each of the departments when they were doing their discussions, I went through and I checked off almost everything that Tim had just described to us that would cut from the capital projects. So, you know, I find myself aligned with what he has said.
Okay. I don't wanna cut capital projects. If something has to be trimmed, I mean, I guess I can be swayed, but I really don't wanna delay that just because it's stuff that has to get done. And by backing it up, and I know where Tim's coming from because you wanna address the issue at hand and to make sure that we, at least this year, we can. But we're gonna be in the same spot next year. What I can come up with is...
We'll be in a worse spot.
Well, actually, I would agree with that. We're just as bad. But the bottom line is, I definitely am all in to finding a way to support the chief with detective. Everybody knows what he's asking for, so I definitely, I'm still getting support from people saying, "We'll pay the tax." I'm getting support that way. Through emails, I wanna be completely honest. I have to say over the weekend, more of the emails that I got, a lot more of the conversation was tax and not franchise fee. That being said, I am getting that and I think the people deserve a right to speak out and have a say in that. The thing that I do like about the franchise fee is that we can designate it for something entirely that it's going to stay that way and there's no way down the road that three years later or five, four years later, when the council may look completely different, that they come in and undo what we did. This ought to be a security blanket is how I'm looking at it so that the, our departments are protected so they don't go beneath a certain staff. Those numbers, I just, there's just no way. Those take big cuts. Those take cuts like, I'm gonna bring this up to make my neighbor mad, like recycling. You know, again, I was the only person that said that, and I know a lot of people are, you know, "Don't you bring that up again." But we're gonna have to take a look at big programs, you know, the 20,000 here and the 20,000 there. It's not gonna support what we need. We need either increase in revenue or we need massive tax cuts, and that's gonna take a big project, a big program. So I'm not prepared to do that. And obviously, well, actually, I guess I was, but I didn't get any support. So I'm for making sure that we get enough cuts that we can get the detective and putting forth a franchise fee. That's where I am on the budget.
As an aside note, Councilman, what did the Economic Development Committee decide with the Grirs?
I had to leave the meeting early, so...
They voted in favor of providing funds for that, up to 150,000 towards the white boxing. Part of what they put in there, they mentioned, that's a pretty significant piece that they're being requested to consider from the council. They would like the council in recognition of that to at least consider what has been put forward towards that as you're thinking about what you're doing towards potentially reducing the amount of funding for economic development activities moving forward. But yes, regardless, they did recommend moving forward with...
And what is the balance in that account? Do we have an idea?
Three, a little over 300,000, right? With the allocation from this year.
Okay, that's an aside note. We'll deal with that later.
You wanna go next?
No.
You want me to? I'll come. All right. Like the rest of these people, I've given this a lot of thought. I've met with you a couple of times to get some guidance and some facts that I could deal with. I am still very strongly opposed to the franchise thing. I think it's our duty and our responsibility to do what we think is best to address the problems of our community. And number one problem right now, I think, has to do with security, safety. With that in mind, I understand that a franchise tax would bring in a lot of money. Another way of putting that, it would cost you and I more money in our utility bill every month. For a 2% increase in our property tax, that is gonna cost you less than if the franchise tax were passed. The mill rate would go from 15.94 to 16.25. What I'm proposing with that, I wish I could do more, but my recommendation is that we go with two police officers and the appropriate equipment to put them on the street. I've asked Jim for a figure on that, and I think, what'd you tell me? 280,000, I think.
First year.
Yeah, first year, 280,000 dollars. A lot of money. Second year would be 220,000. My recommendation is that the tax base would bring in 240,000. And then we need at least 40,000 dollars in cuts to pay for all of this. And those cuts, we've recited some of them several times, and I'm not gonna nitpick. I know Jim has mentioned some, the traffic, you know, the electronic ticketing, the parking lot signage, and a number of other issues. In fact, I asked Jim just today, the 20,000 here, the 10,000 there and so forth. I think he's a better judge of that than I am, is how these departments function and who best could stand, shall we say, a cut of whatever. So as I see it, we have come up with cuts easily covering the shortages that the tax brings in by at least 80 to 100,000 dollars. I think that way, we put more policemen on the street, we've raised taxes, yes, which nobody likes. But I'll repeat, a 2% property tax increase is gonna cost you less than a 3% or 4% franchise tax fee. The other thing with the franchise tax, I keep saying this, what if it doesn't pass? And I bet you it won't. Then we have to go in, like you said, we have to really get back here now and do the tough stuff. And I don't understand why we wanna do that. That's the end of my speech at this time. You're next now.
I honestly could not, Councilman Scott, go with all those capital cuts. I couldn't do that. I guess a couple of people have questioned whether it's our commitment to public safety. And I have started, stated from the beginning, that the most important thing that we do here is public safety. And then streets and sewer and that sort of thing is after that, but public safety is number one. I'm still set on economic development fund can be cut. If we keep the library at its current level, that's 30,000 dollars we could save there. The fire equipment, he said he didn't need, that's another 20, and the digital things, 10. And then either you go 25 or 50 on the parking lot signage and you'd have your 31, 50, 70, 80. That's 105,000 roughly that you could accomplish what Councilman Fleming has suggesting here. And I started this budget process by saying I was not in favor of a tax increase. And based on input I've gotten from a number of different sources, there are some loud voices out there who say never, ever have a tax increase. But realistically, how can you possibly sustain running your government with never having a tax increase? Because you can't just keep cutting and cutting and cutting, because pretty soon then your departments can't do what they're supposed to do. And what's the point of doing it if you can't do your job? So that's not a good place to be. I've gotten a number of emails from people like you, Mayor, said, "I'm okay with the tax increase." And I don't like that idea too much, but I'm thinking that Mr. Fleming has a solution that we can go with as long as, and this is my caveat, between now and a year from now, we are seriously looking at every possible thing that we can change. Whether that's the bus system, or the auditorium, or I don't know, whatever it is. Every single place that we can look and find some money. So that a year from now, we have in hand 300 to 500,000 dollars so we can carry on for the next year, these positions. So I'm gonna agree with Mr. Fleming.
And just reiterate on how you're agreeing with Mr. Fleming.
So the tax rate would go to 16 and a quarter. We would cut this 100,000 dollars in suggestions that I just made here. And then I would fund our two police officers for the next fiscal year.
Together with a car and whatever else they need.
Yeah, and maintain them at the end of the cops grant. I know that leaves out the fire department for now.
Which I hate to do, by the way. And again, and the tax increase, which nobody likes, including me, will cost these, our citizens, less than a franchise fee if it passed.
So, bottom line out there folks at council, I don't like the idea of tax increases, but I think you have to have some give and take. And this is the negotiation process, and we are at an impasse. So I'm saying this is the best that we can get right now, what Mr. Fleming is suggesting, along with those cuts.
Run those cuts again, Jim.
I'm saying that we're gonna keep the library at its current funding level, which is like 31, 32,000 dollars.
Right.
Economic development fund for 20. The fire department equipment that wasn't necessary was 20,000, the digital ticketing for 10. And the parking lot folks said they probably could do their job for 25 instead of 50, but I would be okay with taking the whole 50. So 31, 51, 71, 81, 25 would be 106. And how much did you think you needed?
That's more than I need. But I figured hit as much as we can, you know? So if you got 100 to 110,000 savings...
So then the tax rate wouldn't have to be 16.25, it could be 16.20, for instance.
Yeah, it could be.
I'm throwing, laying that out there, folks. So there you go.
Rebutts?
I can say, all right, we won't look at the franchise fee. We'll look at, we'll look at the cuts that I proposed, get through the, get through this year and have that discussion, and then decide what we're gonna cut and how much we're gonna increase taxes to fulfill the request of the police and fire department. We have, both those departments are, right now, extremely overworked. They're seeing an average increase in calls and fire and ambulance of 200 to 300 a year. We can't expect them to continue to do more and more with less and less.
I agree.
We've got, but there's, I know you agree, but there's nothing in what you're proposing to increase fire department.
I know.
With what we, with what I'm proposing, we're gonna be well on our way to filling two positions for the police department, one for the fire department, and a part-time for nuisance. And what you're proposing doesn't take into consideration the next year, it's not gonna fund them for the next year, because you've got 105,000 dollars in cuts yourself. So we're looking at the same thing. I'm just not increasing property taxes this year. And we really don't need another vehicle in the fleet just for development department. I think we can easily get by on one tractor, one new tractor, one John, new John Deere tractor this year instead of two. The other cuts are the same thing that you're proposing, the signage, the electronic tickets, the heart monitors, the economic development fund. And I'm saying eliminating the parking lot that we really don't need at this time from the Main and Valley Street. And the only other thing is, the big one is the pump house. And why should we pay for that out of other taxes and not have the users of that facility pay for it?
What are you trying to get again, Tim? You're trying to get to, what are you trying to reach as far as personnel?
330,000 dollars this year to fund the two police officers, continue the cops grant, hire one firefighter and a part-time nuisance. We go for 330,000 dollars, and there's no property tax increase, and we can forget the franchise fees. We can, as long as we're gonna sit down and look at everything else that we do and make a decision on what we're, what we can really cut without saying, "I think that we can cut 30,000 dollars from the library without affecting the operation," or that we can cut anywhere else without really giving it a lot of thought. If we determine through our diligent search of what these departments do and what we think they can cut, and we come up with a 300,000 dollar cut to the library, so be it. We may find out that we need to increase the funding at the library. I don't know at this point. I don't have all the information I need in front of me. We can accomplish more than what you're wanting to accomplish with what I'm proposing in cuts without cutting much more than what you're already talking about cutting, and without affecting the operations of the department and with letting people pay for what they're using. and with letting people pay for what they're, what they're using. And Jim, you even said that, 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 that the, uh, the practice of bonding and paying with a, with an additional fee out at the golf course is, is something we've done in the past and, and the precedent had been set. I think it was for the last pump house, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, it was irrigation system, I think. But that doesn't necessarily mean that's the right thing to do at the current time. I don't know. What, what do you feel about a bonding for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar pump house? Is that a good idea or is that not?
We can't do it this year. You could do it next year.
What's the shape of the pump house? I mean, what's the, what's the deal with it? What's the implications if we don't do it now?
If we don't do it and it fails, then we have no irrigation on the course, which essentially, none if the pump house fails. It's an older system. It, it's something we've looked at the last couple of years. That's why we had money budgeted and talking to the consultants on it. We were trying to piecemeal it together and they said it would cost you more in the long run to do it. That's why we brought it forward this year as one item. We don't know, we can't say it's gonna fail this year, but it's adding age that it, uh, if it does fail, it, it's shutting down good use of the course. I mean, we're not gonna have irrigation. You're not gonna have fairways and greens that are maintained. So it could have a big implication. But I can't say a hundred percent it's gonna fail if we don't replace it. But if it does, it, it's a big issue for the golf course for this year.
Has there been any problems with it so far?
We've had, not ma- major would be shutting down. We've had minor repairs and it's to a point that it's past its useful life. They don't supply a lot of the parts anymore and maintain it. So we're at that point. We planned for it the last two years, but we delayed it because we didn't wanna do a patchwork job. So, but yeah, I can't say it's definitely gonna fail or not, but if it does, it's not a good situation for the golf course.
Well, like Jim said, I'm not in favor though of cutting these capital items. I just don't wanna do that.
I don't either, but I would.
If you were, if you were doing that, the, the way that we would have to fund it, it would be a project that you should have in next fiscal year. Uh, so it'd be after, probably, I would assume after the season. And then you would do the borrowing or bonding for it after the project was complete. You'd have to have a hearing, uh, prior to it, but you wouldn't do the, you wouldn't be able to do the actual bonding until next calendar year. We've used up our ability to borrow for this year with the issue that you're doing tonight. Doesn't mean you can't borrow in the next fiscal year though, or next calendar year.
Just because we don't bond for it, doesn't mean that we couldn't add a, a dollar fee to the golf course to help pay for it, right?
You have to, yeah, you can add a dollar fee to help pay for it, correct?
Yeah. I, I could do that, Tim. I could delay the, the pump, uh, well, apparently we won't have to do that, obviously.
No, you don't have to do that.
No.
No, you don't.
So that one's a...
If, if you do that and it does fail, you, it just completely wiped out your season, basically. Because people just don't wanna play it.
Right. But I mean, you, uh, just know we're not gonna get billed for it till, uh, two thousand and eighteen.
I mean, I don't know what your plan was for when you were hoping to do that project? If you were hoping to do that this spring before the season started?
This, this fall it would be. It's not, it's not in this year's budget.
So it'd be the same, it'd be the same timing as what you're already talking about. It's just you'd borrow, you'd borrow after January one.
But probably wouldn't even take a dollar extra what Eric paid for it, maybe just fifty cents.
I, I don't know what the terms of the bond would be, but...
No, I'm not talking about bonding. I'm just talking about...
Well, he needs to know how much he needs to rate, or how much he has to, for the repayment amount. And so to know how much that dollar fee will, will cover, it's until we have...
I'm basically not in favor of bonding for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I'm not in favor of going into the capital items.
I'm not, just, I, I didn't like it when we bonded for garbage trucks. So I don't like it. It just increases the cost so much.
Let's taper it down to what, what are we, uh, what are we gonna walk away here with? What do we, what do we have to have? We need a consensus on what we're, what we're gonna have to have.
Uh, Jim and I, there's two. We need a third.
What, you know, I...
I mean, I guess if, I feel like if we're gonna, if we're gonna raise taxes, you, you guys are suggesting two off, was it two officers?
Two police officers, yeah.
Two police officers. I just feel like for a little bit more, it would be two officers, maintain the cops grant, additional firefighter and then the part-time nuisance that all kind of...
I, I hear you on that.
I mean, I don't wanna...
You get what you need.
And that's not even really what we need. We need more. But I guess that's all that...
You're not gonna get more though. We just don't have the money for it. We just...
Well...
You know, but we will have, if we follow what I'm suggesting, a year from now we'll be set. If we can do it. Now, I don't know if we can do it.
You're about to say, uh...
There's a big, yeah. And I don't, I don't even care. To me, it's okay if you wanna put out the franchise fee for a vote. I, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of it, but if the community wants to have it, then let's do it.
No, but would you be willing to go a little bit higher with the property tax?
I...
It's, it's gonna be the last option on the most recent piece of paper.
I'd like to keep it at two percent.
On this one here?
Yeah, forty-seven cent increase.
Yeah.
Sixteen dollars and forty cents.
What are you talk, you're, you're talking for?
For two police officers, maintain the cops, grant, at the, staffing at the end of it.
I see where you're on it. Additional firefighter.
Right. Cause all of those, those three departments are severely understaffed.
Oh, no question.
That, but then you'd say the total levy would be sixteen forty, less whatever we could save
Right.
on these cuts. Sixteen forty's a big increase.
I think it is. Um, I think we need to let the, I think we need to let the people speak on a, on, on making a jump. But I'm, I'm kinda like Annie, which you, you made a statement before. You said either, either as is or all in. We're kinda all in. Um, I think we do need, uh, I think we need to vote. If we're, we can't afford this, but if, if the people are willing to, uh, increase or, or add a tax, I think we need the six police officers and I think we need at least three firefighters. And if we can afford to do that, I think we need to do that. The only way we can afford to do that is with an increase. So with the, with the fee, whether it's, however you got, whatever the consensus is how we do it, I would say that, no, let's not vote on, on a piece of, you know, getting a piece of what they want. We can tax that out. Let's, let's, uh, let's go ahead and get what we need because otherwise there's no other way that we can. Let's, let's go after it. What are we gonna do right now? What are we getting? What's our, what's our consensus? How many people are with, uh, adding any fire to this budget?
Not at this time.
I'm worried with that, Mayor. Um, two police officers, a firefighter and a part-time nuisance with the plan to add the total of six police officers, three firefighters and the one nuisance over the, the three-year period. And the only way that's gonna happen is if we sit down and discuss it. Um, discuss these, like every department, everything that we do, every option that we have.
Something's gonna have to go. Something's gonna have to go. You know...
You just said the same thing. You said six, three and one. I'm saying the same thing.
No, no, I'm agreeing with you there. I'm saying there's a service that's gonna have to go and we're gonna need an increase. Uh, we're gonna need increase rapidly.
We can't say that until we have all the, until we have everything in front of us. We've gotta, we've, you know, we've, we've gotta know whether, uh, whether, uh, turning one service over to, uh,
Right.
to the private sector is a, is enough to get us that, that or if we've got, if we, if we have to make cuts, we can't, I, I can't make any decisions without having uh, the information in front of me. I don't wanna say that I think we can, that we can cut out the swimming pool and, and satisfy, uh, the police, fire and nuisance needs and, and not hurt a soul in this, uh, community by doing it. I think there's a real opportunity to take a little piece here, a little piece there and, and, and be able to produce the, the plan that we need for police, fire and nuisance. Looking at one, one time, one time capital, um, suspension. It's not like it's gonna go away. It's not like we can't, uh, look at, look at all of this in the future. I don't think there's any single thing there that's, that's really gonna put anything in jeopardy, except potentially the, the pump house if it goes bad. But if we don't have two firefighter, or a firefighter or two police officers, officers, you know, uh, how do we know that one of those wouldn't save a life if they were on, on board? I mean, we, we can do a lot of what ifs here all night long.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
You had me at hello. You swayed me, Tim. Um, I, I don't, I don't see any other route, but I, but here's my, here's my thing. I just don't, cause I've got three years left of this chair and I don't wanna come back here next year and ha, and revisit the same. I, I'd rather, I'd rather squash it out and I, I'd just like to see something where, if I believe right, I remember it was brought up last year that we need to look at, in the year before, that we need to look at bigger, bigger cuts, um, privatizing things. How are we gonna look at that? Because I don't wanna keep looking at it. If we're gonna look, I wanna see something and...
The day we vote, the day we vote on the budget, we need to set a schedule to do it, to come right out of the next day.
Amen.
And look at it. We need, I, we've, there's, there's four of us that have said that, that we have to sit down and look at everything that we do and this time do it before we're a month out from approving a budget.
Exactly.
That's, that's the, that's the only way we're gonna get there. Or you're exactly right. You're gonna be here next year. You're gonna be going through the same exact steps that you're going through this year and you're gonna be cutting capital, capital budget to help pay for police, fire and nuisance.
We need two cops that, uh, is coming up and, and, and a fire.
If we went from two to two and a half percent tax, what is the half of it?
Six and three.
About another fifty thousand? Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five or sixty, something in that neighborhood.
Well, so we went to two and a half, just took a few more cuts, had a firefighter.
I can do it. I can get with Tim. And, uh, Annie, are you making a third?
Yes.
To do what?
To do what?
To do some, uh, capital, uh, improvement, cuts, one-time cuts.
I wanna hear how bad it is first from the city manager.
Oh, please. Oh, you gotta hear this, guys.
You're pushing, you know, I guess I've said this a couple of times already, so I don't know that it's anything different. I don't like the idea of paying for ongoing costs with one-time cuts because now you've put a decision on next year's council
Right.
to, uh, if they're gonna maintain operations to have a, the equivalent of a forty-seven cent property tax increase. If you don't find savings from an operations of a, of an op, of, uh, whatever operation you're talking about, looking to outsource, um, you're of, the, the way to avoid a tax increase next year will be, again, one-time capital cuts. One-time capital cuts on an ongoing basis is putting your, putting yourself up for failure.
The rest of people are gonna investigate it.
That doesn't mean that you can't do it. It just means that you've, you're creating a, a very difficult scenario for a year from now.
All the more reason why the five of us have to sit down and do this before we get to the next council.
Exactly. Because I don't feel like we have ever discussed that. In the year that I've been here, even though the majority, majority of everyone here has voiced their wants to get rid of, not get rid of, but change hands on some of the services that we provide. We haven't actu, we just talk about that. We don't talk about how we're gonna do it. So I, I think this would be okay if we can get serious about, about those topics and actually talking about them. Not just talking about how we wanna talk about them.
Well, there's, there's no getting around it. We, um, those things have to be, those things have to be investigated and that we, we're at, uh, there's no getting around to it. Me personally, I don't wanna privatize anything. I, I think we've got great state employees doing their jobs. All of that, um, is just that it's not, it's not sustainable for, um, how the world has changed and how much more policing, uh, is relied upon. And, uh, that being said, I think we need to, uh, prepare ourselves. Uh, we're gonna need, we're gonna need to do that.
Can, can we ask Councilman Scott to go down his list again?
Delete the development, uh, departments, inspection departments, uh, replacement of a vehicle. That's, uh, twenty-four thousand dollars from sales tax. Eliminate one of the John Deere tractors from the two that were requested. Uh, twenty-three thousand dollars hotel motel, uh, tax and, uh, swapping that out with, uh, sales tax from the community field, uh, so that it's sales tax that's going into this, not hotel motel tax. Um, parking signage, uh, reducing that from fifty to twenty-five thousand. Eliminating the electronic tickets, uh, eliminating the twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars for the heart monitors, which was, the fire department got in and granted. The economic development fund of, of twenty thousand dollars and, uh, postponing of, uh, the, uh, pump house, um, for the golf course. And then, uh, the parking lot at Main and Valley, uh, fifty thousand dollars there. Hundred and twenty in the pump house and fifty thousand at, at Main and Valley. And then, uh, taking three hundred, thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars from the, uh, one time, one point two million dollar payment from, uh, Spear and Weingard Development, um, would give us the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars we'd need for those, uh, for those positions for one year. The other cuts that I proposed was, um, from the capital projects, uh, flood wall ops is, uh, cutting back to two, two flat bed trailers from six and, uh, and looking at the potential of using, uh, job boxes instead of, uh, enclosed trailers. And I, I would, before I'd make that a permanent proposal, I want, uh, uh, the public works, uh, or deputy city manager and the city manager to look at that and get back, uh, at, at to us and, and, uh, show us how that can be done.
That's, that's outside of what you're suggesting.
Yeah, that's, that's not part of the, that's not part of the cuts to get the, uh, the public safety taken care of. It's just additional, uh, capital that, um, that I feel is, from a business person's standpoint, doesn't need to be spent. Not saying eliminate them all, just reduce them.
Uh, the biggest one I would have a problem with is that pump house thing. Cause if it goes bad, then we're, we're really in trouble.
I, I disagree getting into these capital accounts. I don't think that's the place to go.
I don't like it, but I do like the, the thought of, uh, starting off with two, uh, policemen and, uh, I know that that would be, uh...
And so what is this, Mr. Scott, what does this get us now? Two policemen and, uh...
Two policemen, a firefighter and the nuisance, part-time nuisance.
Oh, that's three hundred and thirty. Okay, that's where that came from.
I can say I love it, but, um, I can, again, I can, I can do that.
It's no property tax increase. It gives us an opportunity to discuss whether we wanna put the franchise fee on or, uh, if we wanna first talk about the other options that we have and, and, uh, look, uh, look at, uh, get the data that we need to make intelligent decisions on, uh, cuts elsewhere.
Yeah, I got a book full of data. I don't know what more you need. And I, then I think of the time that these department heads have gotten together to put together what they think they need to operate and they're sitting here and saying, "We need more information." Good Lord, I wouldn't know what to do with it. Got forty-eight pages here, I think. I mean...
But I'm, I'm for one, I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna support an, an increase in property taxes to seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents, uh, to fund all of those positions. All I want to do is... All I want to do is fund the positions that the Public Safety and the Nuisance Office has asked for. They know better than I do than what we do cumulative on what they need. And if, if, if they're lying to me, then they shouldn't be in the position they're in, and I know them well enough that they wouldn't. They're only asking because their officers, their departments need these people.
Nobody's arguing that point.
Well, but you're saying they can get by with two. I'm looking to fund all six positions in the Police Department, all three in the Fire Department, and the one in the Nuisance Department.
I say we can't afford it even if we wanted to.
We don't know until we have all the facts in front of us.
I don't know what, what more, I don't know what facts you're looking for, cause we have to make a decision here pretty soon, guys.
We're gonna make one right now, I think we've got a consensus.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
A hundred percent.
Well, we need three to move forward on this budget. I'm getting, I'm getting over here that you want your tax, that you want a slight tax increase with, with what increase in personnel?
Two police officers.
Oh, two police officers.
And I'll go two and a half percent if you'd like, and we'll get a policeman or a firefighter.
And Mayor, for Tim, you were?
Well, I can agree with him, but I can also agree over here, except for that pump house thing, I think that's a mistake.
Annie, are you, are you uncomfortable with, with anything on Tim's list?
Yes and no, I mean, if the, the pump house should fail, then there goes a hole, whatever, an asset we have. But otherwise, I'm, to, to get past to where we need to go, I'm, I'm for it.
Feel better with it?
Yes.
I think, I think that's where we're at. Jim?
The only thing, we can present that for the, modify the budget documents to have that. With the pump house, are you completely eliminating the project, or are you saying you're going to bond for it in next, next calendar year?
I would, I thought we were gonna entertain, Mr. Davidson brought up increasing the, the fees, and hopefully within a season we can, we can have the money for the...
You won't raise a hundred and twenty thousand in a season to do that?
Right.
So are you gonna wait until you've raised a hundred and twenty thousand to do the project? Or how, how are you addressing it, just not doing it?
That's not, that's not an option.
Even if you raise the do- use the dollar fee, you still, to do a project, you have to, to borrow them. If you're doing it with a fee structure that it's gonna take several years to repay, you're gonna have to borrow the money. Or is that what you're wanting to do, to borrow the money in next year? And that, you can have a separate decision about whether you're using the dollar fee structure to make the bond repayments or raising, or using debt service levy. But if you're gonna borrow for it to make it happen, that's, that's a different thing from just completely eliminating it, which one are you looking to do?
I don't have a problem with bonding for it if it's gonna be paid for with, with the revenues from, from the golf course. I'm satisfied with that. As long as we're gonna increase the fees.
Anytime you bond for something, you just exponentially increase the cost.
But we're, we're increasing the costs every year because we're, we're borrowing money every year. I mean, there's not, we're not, we're not gonna be able to get away from that.
It was intended to come out of motel tax, right?
The one thing I was gonna mention to keep in consideration for the Main and Valley parking lot is that those two buildings are scheduled to be demoed this spring by Mr. Coffin. And if they are demoed this spring, they will probably leave a fairly substantial hole in the ground. So there, it'll be, it'll be left on...
He's supposed to level the lot, right?
Level it?
Yeah, so if it's not paved, what we would, I, I would assume we'd just go to seat it?
Yeah, we'd have to, he's just removing it down to the foundation, there's no foundation, there's no basement, but he's just removing it. So we'd have to haul in dirt and seat it now.
So we'll still have some cost even if you don't pave it, whatever that would take to get that done. And then we'll have to maintain, we'll have to mow it and maintain it.
So are we ready to? Any other comments, or, again, I'm, I'm satisfied.
I will not vote for this.
You still want the, um, pump house left in and plan on borrowing and pay for it back at some point?
Yes.
I will not vote for that.
I will, okay. All right, we're going to conclude this meeting, thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, Jim.